Hello, good evening and welcome. This is the October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the East Long Meadow.
This meeting is being recorded.
Committee. I'll let you. Call the meeting to order at six oh two. The meeting is being both audio and videotaped this evening, and I would ask that everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the small with liberty and justice for all. Hey, if I could ask for a roll call, please, Sarah, please, sir.
That's what secretary.
And our assistant superintendent for business.
Antonella Rochella.
Meeting is being recorded.
Gordon Smith, superintendent of schools.
I apologize.
And the meeting is being recorded.
February Thompson.
Sarah Trillo.
Kate Lyden.
Amy Delenta.
Heather Brown, director of curriculum.
Sandrine Alidora, student rep.
Okay, great, thank you all. Minutes for approval tonight. Take a motion, please.
We approve the October second, twenty twenty-three regular session meeting minutes.
Motion made by Antonella.
Second.
Second by Sarah. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I had those pose nay. That carries five to zero. Thank you all. Meeting and some communications. You'd like to start, please?
Sure, I don't have anything tonight.
Excellent, thank you, Sarah.
I don't have anything tonight either.
Kate.
I do not have anything.
Amy, come on.
I'm not, sorry.
Sandrine.
I do have some.
So the Key Club and the Princeton Club both had fundraisers in the last few weeks that were very successful. This Thursday, the juniors and some of the sophomores have the PSAT, and the freshmen will be taking their first round of IREDDI testing. And the seniors hopefully will have a field trip to Mike's Corn Maze Maze in, I want to say Senior Amherst.
Sunderland.
Sunderland, thank you, thank you. And next Friday, there will be a college fair at the school, and this Friday, there will be a Pink Pinkout Day for support efforts to end breast cancer.
Excellent, thank you, Sandrine. And Mr. Smith, you have some.
Do we have.
Fear check members?
Exactly, Fear Check Students of the Month. This month in automotive technology, we had Noah Rushford. Uh, in building property management and maintenance, we have Trevor Sapanic. And in cosmetology, we have Isabella Hanson. Those are our three students of the month for the month of September. So congratulations to all three.
Excellent.
It's exciting.
It is exciting. Thank you for that. Okay, we have an opportunity for visitors to address the committee, seeing no one tonight, we will move right along. We have an update on the MSBA P D unit and studying and East Long Meadow High School building.
Hey. So in your packets and now up on the screen, uh, this update is getting shorter and shorter as we get closer and closer to November seventh. Um, but certainly that's a picture of our current building, the front of our current building. Next slide gives you a look at overhead view of our existing campus. Next slide after that. View of where we hope to go. Um, the football field up in the upper left there, uh, is the existing football field and then everything else on campus would be reconfigured, and you've seen pictures um throughout the last few updates. So as I said, we're getting um down to our last few public moments, if you will, this being one of those where we can update um where we are in the process and what will happen leading into November seventh. If you want to go to the next slide, please. So we've attended all our open houses. Those are listed up on the screen, starting with Maple Shade back on the sixth, and then worked our way through Burchland Mountain View, the high school, and then the two open houses that took place first week of October, Meadow Brook. This past Friday, we uh right before lunch um did a presentation at the Council on Aging, uh, which was decently attended, I'd say twenty to thirty people possibly, and we were competing against a few different uh events. You had um, I think, dancing coming in later and there was um something going on out in the main. I don't remember what it was, but there was an event going on that moved us from the main area where they usually have lunch to the media room. So um we worked uh to present in the media room and answer questions. We got a um some questions that we hope to bring into our community forum that um will take place, our last community forum that will take place this Thursday here at the high school. Uh, and so as we've done with the forums that um we've scheduled at the high school, we'll have a five thirty tour and then the forum at six P M. And that will be our last public forum. Uh, it's our seventh forum prior to the November seventh date. The polls, if you go to the last slide, will be open on November seventh, and I believe seven A M to eight P M. There really um are only two items, two ballot questions on the um ballot this year. It's the uh question around allowing the debt exclusion for the high school project, and then the question allowing the debt exclusion on the pool project. Those are the two questions. And I believe there is early voting that's starting as early as two weeks from now. I think you have to check with the town clerk's office on that. I don't know the exact date when the early voting starts.
How does that work? They just show up at where?
Town, our library, actually.
Library and they just say, I want a ballot?
Yep, it'll be a regular polling station setup. And um so we'll be at a table just like uh voting day. Um, you can check your registration status on the town website. If you did not return your uh census, then you may not be active voter, so it's worth checking. I checked mine. It's active still, so.
It's quick to become active too, I think.
Yeah.
If you're.
Checking.
Yeah. They do it, yeah. Some people were thinking that if they didn't do the census, they couldn't vote.
Oh, okay.
Without like a quick change, like at least going on and trying to fill out the.
Contact your clerk's office.
Yeah.
They updated.
So they can still vote as long as they.
Three weeks from tomorrow, so check your status.
Yes.
Make sure that uh if you're a registered voter, that you're an active voter.
Right.
And early voting starts Saturday, October twenty eighth. Can people still register to vote right now?
The deadline was rapidly closing in. It might hit pass. If not, it's soon this week.
That's all I have on.
Great.
You.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Have a fall status report. Me, he stopped close me. Okay, so we um things a little differently uh with how we're writing on the rules, smart goals that eventually finalized probably on the November sixth. But um wanted to bring them sort of in combination with the data report, uh, accountability report or fall status report. Um, so somewhat um meshed, if you will, and wanted to give you just a quick background as to why we've we've done that. Um. People probably know back in June, um, so again, the June Department of Secondary Education put out, from the time that I know of, a vision statement with then um their goals and objectives and and action steps, and then um I put this in the packet, not because I wanted to expand the amount of paper that you have. And all the resources and so forth. But the cool thing about this was um that if you look at their vision statement, our original goals that go back probably to right around when we were doing the equity audit match so much of what Desi's vision is. So that was that was really um sort of a moment of celebration, if you will, for the leadership team and the district in that we were already doing the work that Desi is indicating um is the work that's necessary across the Commonwealth, and so we were excited about that. So much so that we had um Tiffany this summer, and we said, hmm, since we're somewhat in alignment with their vision, maybe we should write our goals more in the style that they actually wrote this vision statement. So that's where you'll see as we go through the fall status report. Um, we got the new style. And because it was new, what I've done as a leadership meeting over the last few meetings is I've taken the three overarching goals, a whole child, teaching and learning, and um an inclusive and um supportive learning environment. And what I tried to do is, as we went from the overarching goal into objectives and then action steps, highlight for the schools where this might be a district action step, this might be more of a school uh or building action step, this might be both. So the, what we talked about as we went through this over the last few leadership team meetings was they can't obviously do it all. They really want to look at what is making sense as they look at each of the overarching goals for where their staff and their students are and go after those objectives and action steps um really incredibly this year. They do it every year, but um just to start to let them tell their story for for their school and where their community is at this year. That makes sense. Until you'll hear more about that as we go through the next few meetings. So that's where these um, oh, I apologize. So this document also is something that um fed our fall status report and our SMART goals, and this was something that was put together after our final two at the end of last school year, our final two um diversity and equity steering committee meetings. And what we did is we um broke out for the equity and diversity, excuse me, diversity and equity steering committee, where we've been, what we've done, and what we still probably need to do, but we wanted their feedback on where they felt the SMART goals for the district should go and action steps should go. And so that's where the, we did this on a series of um flip chart pages and broke into small groups, and then Ms. Brown did an incredible job of taking all those flip bar, flip chart pages and um tallying them so that you know, okay, which uh items were highlighted once, twice, three times, four times, you know, okay, this got a number of looks, a lot of discussions, so these are the things we should be thinking about. Just gives you an idea of the background of where the goals have been. Right, now we'll break into the actual status reports. So this is something that um we talked about last year. Um, it just give you an idea of really who our students are in twenty twenty-three, uh, but probably more importantly, as you look at accountability data, how Desi breaks the subgroups. And so more on the right side um are what you'll see as we go through accountability data, how Desi breaks up their subgroups. But on the left side, it just gives you an idea of what our student population um really is comprised of right now, uh, which is different and has been changing probably for the last ten years at least. You know, just on the, if you look at our uh first language, not English, up top here on the right, seven point four percent, that's uh, that's gone up since uh I began as superintendent and uh, we have a, an incredible number of languages that are being spoken in homes across East Long Meadow, so it's 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 pretty neat. Uh, but one of the um items that we talked about at the end of last year and even at the beginning of last year is that our low income subgroup has gone up significantly. Some of that's because Desi redefined the threshold for what was considered low income, um, and some of that's just challenging socioeconomic times. Um, and so we're at twenty seven point four percent. Students with disabilities is hovering right around twenty one percent um and high needs, which really uh, Mr. Thompson had asked this the other day, high needs is reflective of really students that might be in the category of English language learner, students with disabilities, or low income, or maybe they cross over um and are in a couple of different subgroups. And so we have a a significant percentage of our students who are classified in the high needs category, and so that's something that we should be thinking about, uh, and you'll see as we go through the presentation.
And a question, forty one percent of all of our students are considered.
High need, so they're they're either in one of those categories or more than one of those categories, meaning students with disabilities, ELL students, or low income. And Desi breaks it out all different ways, but high needs is the catchall for the three categories. So overarching goal of supporting the whole child, still obviously are very much uh focused on this goal, and it's part of what we've continued to carry forward as we put our goals together and we go through our fall status report. I won't, I won't read each, each one for a while.
But I think it's important to read unless students have this kind of environment, it's hard to learn, and so that's why it's really front and center in terms of um one of our goals.
Absolutely. But we start um thinking about the environment, environment that's welcoming. We always start with our um fall climate and wellness survey, and just so you remember um, the answers are taken in the favorable, so favorable responses. Uh, it always gets confusing when you see challenging feelings and you have a percentage there. That's people who are not experiencing challenging feelings. They answered favorably that they have not experienced frustration or anger or some of the other challenging feelings. So as you go through this, it's broken out of, as you remember, um, in grade spans, six through twelve, and then um three through five, and then K to two. So six through twelve, schools, by the way, can break this out so they can see their, not only their grade spans, but they also can break it out by grade, and they can break it out any number of ways. This they do all this through Panorama, which um has become very, very helpful. Um, so if we have um, we're using the Panorama survey questions straight up, and we haven't changed them at all, then we get a percentile with um that's somewhat of a national percentile for any district that's using Panorama surveys. If you have added some of your own questions or you have altered the questions at all, um, then you don't have that percentile, but we always have the comparison in terms of what it looked like from a a previous survey. So supportive relationships basically has stayed the same in our grade six through twelve as we begin this school year, um, but it is in the ninety ninth percentile. School safety notched upwards a little bit. Um. School safety has uh your questions around bullying and conflicts in school. It's not necessarily safety in terms of how, say, we've discussed the uh design for the new high school in terms of locking doors and that kind of thing. It's more around the day-to-day interaction, excuse me. School climate notched upwards to eighty four percent. Positive feelings stayed about the same as where we were last spring. Challenging feelings notched upward, meaning that um people, fewer people are experiencing challenging feelings, and engagement is still hovering right around fifty nine percent, even though it's up um a couple of points or three points. Um, and this was something that, if you remember, we did look at last year where we changed the questions because they seemed to be confusing. Um. And now we're asking questions that um are, you know, how focused are you in class on a daily basis, questions um, how how much do you enjoy um or look forward to your classes and the things you're learning in classes, things of that nature? Um. And we're at fifty nine percent, six through twelve. Moving on to three through five, um, interesting supportive relationships here, while still in the ninety ninth percentile. Um, it notched downward from the spring survey to ninety one percent. School climate, similar to the six through twelve, um, went up a little bit. School safety also went up. Some of that maybe due to the fact that uh we're still in relatively the first two months of school, and so sadly, um, we know that conflicts will arise eventually in, you know, a ten-month school year, and so we may see questions around, have you witnessed bullying, or um have you been the target of bullying? That may increase. Positive people, about the same. Challenging feelings, similar to what we saw in grade six through twelve, up a little bit, um, and student engagement went up a little bit. Uh, though we'd like to see those percentages higher, obviously.
Were some of the questions around engagement?
So engagement are, um, are you interested in what you're learning in your classes? How focused do you tend to be on a daily basis? Ms. Brown.
And then three to five, we also ask, when you feel like giving up, how likely is it that you'll keep on trying? And how much do you pay attention during the school day? How comfortable are you asking teacher questions? And when you get stuck learning something new in class, how likely are you to try it in a different way?
Thank you.
So it's a little, it's a little bit more than just engagement, but it gives us a good idea of growth mindset and things like that.
Is, are they read to the kids at the younger age or explained or just?
Yes.
Like at my step.
And then K to two is not, that's all teacher perception.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll go there next. K to two, um, just as Ms. Brown said, this is, the teachers respond students, and um every year, it's interesting, we're what, I guess what you want to, you you hope, at the end of the year, you're ending high. In the year, you're a little bit lower, so they're seeing um everything a little bit in a downward trend from where they were with their students last year. Obviously, it's a new group of students, we're building routines, and so at the K to two level, they're seeing um emotion, uh, emotional regulation downward from where it was at the end of the year, social awareness downward a little bit, um, classroom effort and so forth. Although the percentages are decent, um, you can see, obviously, in some cases, like classroom effort and engagement and social perspective taking um as well as self-management, uh, those are considerable changes in terms of ten and eleven points. I'm saying, this is after a month and a half, this is where the teachers feel we are with their classes. So we'll have a mid-year and then a end of the year and see how they're feeling with these same type of questions with their classes.
Slide's a little concerning, huh?
Yeah.
This one's a little.
Is there anything significantly different going on this year that that has changed?
These are actually pretty similar to where they reported on it last year, yes. Um, we might be a few, so remember, the arrow there is indicating that from the spring survey, if we go back, which we can do, and we look at the fall survey of where they saw last year's classes, it's pretty similar.
Good to know. So the beginning of last year, this is what it was.
This is, it's very similar, yeah.
Okay.
You know, se- seventy nine percent, you know, it may have been like seventy seven percent in terms of emotional regulation. Um. So they're within a couple of percentage points of where they were.
Yeah.
Um, so we took some of the state um accountability data, and we wanted to highlight a few things. Obviously, as you you'll see shortly in uh slides upcoming, that absenteeism is not only a focus here in East Long Meadow, it's a focus of the state, and um it's a focus, really, I think, across the country, because um even as we continue to move away from the COVID pandemic, we're still feeling its impact. And if you remember, when we were immersed in that and we were trying to come back in person, if you are at to um fall ill and have COVID, we were telling you, you had to be out ten days originally, and then it shifted to five days. Um, and so that caused um in general a large fluctuation with absenteeism, and then um since coming back, dealing with families and students um and working through some of the challenges, we we didn't get everybody coming, bouncing back and feeling like they could attend school a hundred percent like they did before. Well, I don't know if we were at a hundred percent, but anyway, the nice thing is that even though our numbers are pretty high from where they were pre-COVID in terms of um chronic absenteeism, where you see uh numbers like nine point four, eight point five, and the chronic absenteeism is when um someone is out. It could be an excused absence, it could be a, an unexcused absence, there's no um state doesn't look at it any differently, and if they are out ten percent or more of the school year, they uh become part of this chronic absenteeism rate. Nice thing is, we did cut it in half. Um, and as you look at the subgroups that I was talking about earlier, um, where we cut it, um, reduced it for all of our subgroups, which was exciting to see. Um, and so we have more work to do, and you'll see as we start to talk about action steps, that we are continuing to focus on that, both at the school and um the district level. It's nice to see that we exceeded the target. It's also nice to see that um Desi is actually putting targets that are maybe achievable. So that's uh, it was good.
How come they don't give us data for the L and former L?
Uh, you don't have enough in that group.
Uh, how many do you need?
No, twenty.
Uh, you, I, was it twenty or forty?
No, it's.
Maybe it's forty for taking the test.
They're twenty or less, but yeah, so.
Yeah.
If it's too small, then it's too obvious who the kids are.
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah.
They're comfortable.
Got to be twenty or less because you have a twenty-one in there.
Okay.
So the, what I was talking about in terms of objectives and action steps, um so obviously, we want to support students' physical and mental health and wellness uh as we build a climate that's welcoming and affirming, uh, and make sure that people are feeling safe, because if they're not feeling safe, they're not feeling welcome, they can't start to engage their learning at a high level. Um, so we're going to continue to focus in on that. I'm going to go to that second bullet point, and one of the things, uh, I may have said at a meeting here, but if I did not say it, I've said it at leadership team meetings, um, we're reactivating using our comprehensive health grant, a part-time position that can come through that grant, which is a family outreach coordinator, and we feel that that family outreach coordinator can help us with and assist the schools, because the schools, you'll um see, are also going to have attendance teams um and start to really attack attendance and look at this data that they can get through Panorama. They probably were looking at, they looked at more um with a more focused eye last year, and this year certainly even more so. Um, and so we want to assist them in that effort. We want to make sure that uh everyone knows that we really need you here to learn.
Would the efforts of that individual be focused more so on the high school since the rates of chronic absenteeism didn't.
So they're already, yeah, they're already attending um the high school attendance team meetings.
Okay.
Um. The nurse leader attended the high school team. For the first shift person, actually started today.
Right.
So they'll be attending together.
And did the non-high schools attribute uh their rather large reductions in chronic absenteeism to any particular action steps or any particular efforts that they made because?
In the discussion, they haven't necessarily attributed it to anything. Um, what we talked about last year was outreach and getting back to some of the things that um were originally and are again very emphasized in our code of conduct. Um, and then simply that if you're starting to see um consecutive absences, especially unexcused absences rise, that there is immediate outreach. Um, five is the number that they should be, if you see five consecutive absences, that they should be reaching out and start to develop a plan. The key is, um, you know, it's not about punishment, it's about coming up with a plan that's going to help that child come to school. And we, we had a pretty healthy debate about how effective that may or may not be last year, and that continued into this summer as we were building goals and um, I think you'll see more of that, and um I'm excited that the family outreach coordinator that has part of, there, there won't be just attendance, but that will be part of what this uh person can do. Um, and the person's also a registered nurse, and so that's a part-time position. It's also taking another part-time position, helping at Meadow Brook.
Yes, Mr. Smith mentioned Panorama before too. It's, it makes it much easier for principals to get an idea of overall attendance. They, it shows trends going down, and you can really easily see um quickly how kids are doing in terms of intent attendance as opposed to before with Reddick, having to crunch the numbers ourselves. So it's, it's nice that you can just go and see, okay, Bobby hasn't been coming to school the last couple of days, got to reach out.
And Panorama seems to be working really well with our new student information uh management system, Power School, uh, so they're able to see timely information, and they can see. Uh, so they're able to see timely information and they can see both at the secondary level. Um, elementary schools don't do, do not use this, but um, you can see both daily attendance and period attendance. And from what I'm told, if you have the Power School app and your child is marked um, absent for a period, not for the day, but doesn't show up to Mr. Smith's English class, um, you can get an alert. So that's uh, that's something interesting parents may want to know. Students may not want that as much, but you can get an alert. Um, and then just working through, obviously, uh, professional development. One of uh, the elements that came out of our equity audit as a recommendation was making sure that um, our teachers and um, staff, educational staff have a, a better understanding of restorative practices and how they can be implemented. We've spent a lot of our professional development time around uh, universal design for learning. But um, we're going to continue to show sort of the how. Cause one of the things that came out of our discussion with our uh, diversity and equity steering committee was that we've done a lot of professional development since twenty twenty, some of it online, some of it in person. But we're not necessarily seeing it easily cross over at a high correlation rate. You had the professional development, now you're seeing it actually in action in terms of some of the practices. And so we want to continue to see how we can see it in action. Some of that may be just simply breaking it down for people. So what does that mean? Well, it means you utilize X in your classroom or you think about providing this as you're creating an assignment.
I was just gonna say, you know, a lot of the workshops that we're going to offer are about the tools that we already offer and how the teachers, how teachers can um, understand them and use them better. For example, uh, with Wit and Wisdom, it's all higher level text. We're trying to get all kids to access grade level text, but some kids might have str- struggled to access it because of their decoding. So we have Learning Ally audio solutions. So, so that teachers understand the purpose of UDL, but also can use the tools to make it happen in the classrooms.
But um, and then the last bullet point there, this is something that we've been talking about, but we haven't really um, put into any type of concrete form. And I'm hoping that um, this is establishing district-wide expectations for promoting and upholding inclusivity. We have policies that speak to this, but are there ways to make this more explicit? And so um, I'm hoping that our um, diversity and equity steering committee can help us start to draft some things. And then ultimately, we would bring that back to um, the school committee for. Uh, and so a couple of things that we'll probably look at as we get that group up and running again is doing, uh, providing us some help with that, but then also starting to build outreach into the community. What does it mean to be an inclusive school system? Um, what does it mean to be um, to embrace and celebrate diversity? And how do you engage the community in that beyond just the, the school walls? So those are things upcoming.
Yep, so we have um, two um, actions to objectives, I should say, that center around and the MTSS, the multi-tiered systems of support. This one's more of a macro view where um, the idea is that uh, team, the MTSS teams at each school are really digging into those um, Panorama surveys, the vocal survey and to try to, and also, you know, uh, staff feedback and try to figure out uh, if there's any trends that they might want to focus on in, improving tier one. Um, so really getting um, those teams up and running and, and they are up and running, but really understanding how to analyze that data and how to do PDSA cycles so that those are plan, do, study, act. Um, to, just these small cycles to improve different things. Um, so then the other one is more about those individual interventions that we'll talk about, but that's what it's about.
Some of the work that we're doing or we continue to do with the um, leadership in educational equity. Around how do we utilize those PDSA cycles? Um, how do we take some of these action steps, um, or objectives first and then we make them concrete action steps? Um, and, and lead in this work. One of the things that we've brought to the leadership team over the years has been professional development around the use of Panorama. Um, I think it's really starting to click now. It helps, obviously, the Power School, as I said earlier, is connecting better. It's feeding that information, so they have all that information in one spot now. Um, so if you were to look up Gordon Smith, you can see what my I-ready scores are or um, the history that I've been taking I-ready. You can see if I've taken PSATs, you can see what my course schedule is, you can see what my attendance is, a hundred percent, by the way. And um, many other things. Uh, and so it just gives you um, for counselors anyway, a, a quick um, synopsis of the student that, you know, you may be meeting for the first time in terms of a ninth grader. Uh, so uh, that's, that's exciting.
I already saw this in Action at Birch the other day. I got to sit in their MTSS meeting and they were looking at different subgroups and seeing how different subgroups answered and really starting to ask questions about, well, why is this group of students feeling this way? Um, so it's kind of the catalyst into those PPSAs.
So if you think of our, the way we wrote our old SMART goals, um, we had um, the wheel and we had around the wheel, we had the whole child goal. Then we had um, instructional practices, twenty-first instructional prac- twenty-first century, excuse me, instructional practices. And then we had um, continuous learning and achievement, all feeding and connected to each other. The goals are still obviously integral and connected to each other, no longer using the wheel. Oh, and we also combined that twenty-first um, century instructional practices goal with the continuous learning and achievement. And we're just calling it similar to what Desi's looking at as teaching and learning. And so this is where we continue to support our staff with that, um, not only standards-based curriculum, but the professional development and the different things that they need to achieve and hopefully engage their students at a high level. Yeah, brings us back to Steve. And so this is uh, for people that are, are reading these reports can be sometimes um, confusing and uh, quickly disheartening, although if you read further, you feel a little bit better. But when you see the criterion reference target percentage of fifty-one percent, you think, wow, that's really awful. However, it's not awful in how they set up their um, measuring system. So fifty-one percent is actually substantial progress toward targets. Um, as they weigh out the different areas of their accountability system, um, they're seeing that ELPS as a whole is making substantial um, progress towards its targets. And they're about thirty-six percent of the districts in the Commonwealth that are in this category. Meeting or exceeding targets, you have about sixteen percent of the districts. Um, and then moderate progress going back towards the right, moderate progress, you have about thirty-eight percent. So you, you know, in that middle area of either substantial progress or moderate progress, you have the majority of school districts in the Commonwealth. Then um, limited or no progress, you have about three percent. And then two categories that they talk about in the glossary, but they don't necessarily put on their chart. Uh, requiring assistance, you have about six percent of your districts in the requiring assistance category. And then um, the more assistance, the com- uh, the broad comprehensive support category has one percent of the districts in that category. Um, I'm assuming the title that that might be when the state comes in, maybe takes over. Um, maybe one percent of the districts in that category. We're in the substantial progress toward targets category.
Um, we wanted to highlight that we um, did very well in advanced coursework completion. And this is very exciting because it was a goal that got out of our equity audit about making sure we had more and more access to advanced placement um, and higher um, advanced coursework. Um, so you can see special education students, advanced courses went from thirty-four point two percent to sixty-one point one percent. And that's part of our whole universal design uh, push as well. So that, you know, students have this capability to do different things if there's certain barriers in place that we're making sure those barriers are removed. Um, and another thing that really helped was, was switching the scheduling conflicts um, when the schedule sha- changed at um, at the high school. And it really opened up a lot more offerings and, and um, opportunities for students. So this is exciting.
Okay. So as you probably have already noticed, um, the way the accountability system works is it breaks it out, high school and then non-high school. So you get all your grade levels that are taking uh, the MCAS exam in non-high school. You just have your high school um, test takers obviously being reported through the high school. So high school ELA, um, and this is another thing, as you can see over here on the reason, you see something new this year and I'm sure that you've seen um, these pathways. Have you seen this? Um, so Desi has um, come up with some new terminology and new pathways to um, define the um, progress of students and subgroups. And so you have the recovery pathway and you have the um, path forward pathway. And basically what that means is if you've been placed into either as a larger group of students or a subgroup, the recovery pathway, it's because your scaled score um, in twenty twenty-two was not as high as the scaled score in twenty nineteen, their pre-COVID score. So if your scaled score in twenty twenty-two was not as high as the twenty nineteen scaled score, then uh, you are placed into that recovery pathway. If your scaled score in twenty twenty-two was higher, then um, you're in the path forward. And you'll see that flip um, as you go, we go through these results. The um, things that we tend to try to take a look at as well as that, obviously is, we're excited when we see things like exceeded target, met target, exceeded target, improved, or even excited about improved but below target. But we'd like them to hit their targets or exceed them. Um, and we're starting to see some of our subgroups um, do that as well as our students overall. Let's give you a quick snapshot of um, our tenth graders uh, in a chart of the state. And you can see that right now we're in ELA, we're about even with where the state average is for exceeding expectations. We're a little bit above in meeting expectations. Um, we have um, a little bit below in terms of partially meeting expectations, probably because we have a higher number in um, meeting expectations and then fewer. The state average, but obviously with these numbers, twenty nineteen, we were above in most of those categories. That's what, that's what we're looking to do again.
Um, in math, um, our low-income students, but our high-needs students and students with disabilities, um, declined. So uh, one of the things in this SMART goal is about making sure that teachers have access to high-quality instructional materials. We'll talk about those when we get to the, the action steps and uh, objectives. But um, we did implement new curricular materials at, at high school last year. And uh, we also are planning for some um, incredibly robust professional development um, with math K to twelve this year, with math labs with Flynn um, and educational associates um, coming in and, and really helping teachers to um, have the opportunities to kind of witness the shift into student-centered instruction. So it's not just about handing people new curriculum, but also um, providing that professional development so we can um, shift our practice.
And you can see what I'm talking about in terms of you have both up here uh, far right. You have recovery path for some groups and path forward for some groups. Um, so path forward where students uh, in twenty twenty-two have a higher scaled score than they had in twenty nineteen.
Mm-hmm, so it's better to be path forward.
It is, and you have to also remember it's a different cohort.
Yes.
So this is the twenty twenty-three uh, tenth graders, that was the twenty nineteen tenth graders, two different cohorts. But that's how Desi uh, tends to do their accountability system, yeah.
Um, and then this is the comparison against the state. So you can see we have the same percentages of meeting expectations, we're one percentage lower for exceeding expectations, three-four percent partially meeting expectations and the state is forty-two percent. Um, but we do have less students than the state not meeting expectations.
And in science, um, and generally this is, we do have some who would take the chemistry, but generally it's all biology. We've seen similar type um, situations where you have a combination of recovery path and path forward. Um, overall, we had folks who improved but below target. And then um, high needs, uh, we declined a little bit. And low income, we declined as well for students with disabilities. And so uh, this is something that not only are we discussing, but um, also nine through twelve, science is in the curriculum renewal year, study year. So if we're looking to purchase new instructional materials, we'll be able to determine which ones at the end of this year, spend the funds over the summer so that we can have those for next year.
We had great success with the middle school open SIED. Um, and so one of the professional development on the, the seventh of November will be the taste of open SIED so that the science teachers can explore it as one of their options.
Similarly, you have the charts, um, so here we actually were uh, forming state average in terms of exceeding uh, and meeting expectations, had fewer in the partially meeting and not meeting.
Now, and I, and if you haven't done this analysis yet.
Sure.
Totally fine, but back here, students also took, or previous to this, they took the PSAT in ninth grade. This cohort, correct?
Yes.
So is there any alignment between the results that were shown when they were ninth graders? And any measures to indicate that either the interventions that were put in place as ninth graders had an impact? Or are those students continuing to be on a track to receive additional assistance? Trying to see like if we're using that as a data point to help us get ahead of tenth grade data.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are we seeing that as a positive yet? Or are there adjustments that need to be made with this current ninth grade and this current tenth grade? So that we're not seeing those declines?
So we haven't done that analysis yet.
Okay.
But we have that, um, in Panorama, we can do that analysis and start to look at it. Um, the other piece to that is um, the nice thing is that for the first time, we'll have our ninth graders taking I-ready. So we'll see three times this year and we'll have um, quicker hitting ability to see where they're at.
Okay.
Um, and so we'll be able to compare that three times this year and put faster, uh, in place faster interventions. The PSAT data was good, there's debate as to whether um, people took it seriously. Uh, we did some, see some swings in terms of you had students who um, looked like they had done poorly on the PSAT, but then their grades were, you know, uh, A minus average. And so we're, we were wondering, okay, why is that much? And did they take the PSAT seriously? So we started to at the end of last year, sticking into that a little bit. Um, you also had the reverse, it was interesting. And so that's something that uh, came out of our discussions on Panorama, where you had someone who did exceptionally well on the PSAT, but their grades weren't showing that. Um, and so we're wondering why, you know, what was going on here on a day-to-day basis? Where they're not showing that same kind of potential where, where they had done or what they had shown on the PSAT. So um, we have done that uh, individual digging, which I, I thought was pretty good. But we haven't done that clean analysis that you talked about.
Um, so English Language Arts Achievement, this is third through eighth grade. Um, last year was a uh, a new year for an entirely new ELA curriculum. Um, that was a very big lift. Um, so I, you know, teachers are really working hard to implement. Um, and um, because it's the first year, often you, even with them says you're not going to get through all the modules and hit all the standards. So um, not that that's here or there, but I think it's really important to know that with the new curriculum, that might have caused some of the dip, but obviously, as we continue to use a high-quality. that might have caused some of the dip, but obviously as we continue to use a high quality instructional materials, that will increase. Um there's a lot of professional development last year around it. There's continues to be professional development this year. And what's really exciting is we have a um a literacy coach at Meadowbrook this year who um is also participating in the Witten leader, Witten Wisdom Leaders National Cohort, where she's really getting a deep dive into all things Witten Wisdom and has already started bringing all that um to teachers at Meadowbrook. So it's a great asset, all those things combined.
We also saw um this summer, uh a few different teams get together and start to work on this themselves. I say themselves, they were working on planning as a grade level, which was and obviously at um professional development.
We trained specifically to lead the 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 different groups using pieces of their modules because to try to do all of their planning modules would take forever. And we saw great work that came out of the summer and the feedback of I'm feeling much more positive about this. I'm feeling much less anxious about this. And you can see that in in the groups that um were had the opportunity to do that.
Are any of the professional development funds utilized to support the administrators or the coaches? When they are in classrooms to be able to look at if the programs are being implemented in the ways in which they're prescribed? So.
So they all took um observing Witten Wisdom. And part of what um Tracy's work is, is also going to kind of bring us back around where they have the opportunity to do that. And I'm hoping that just kind of building my capacity and her capacity to then build the the leaders capacity for what to look for in a Witten Wisdom classroom. And I'm also feeling like these math labs that we're going to have, the administrators really being able to see uh student center class. Um I think it's going to really help rather than just, you know, checklist of things, um just to be able to experience that to see. Um but it's something, yes, they have professional development, but it's something we're constantly working on. Um the other thing I'm doing this year is meeting once a month with every uh principal and coach at the same time. So we can look at data and talk about those kinds of things and what's going on in classrooms and what kinds of supports we need to put into place. So I'm hoping that kind of loop will also help um continue to build everybody's. Uh against the state, doing um higher in meeting and uh expectations, a little less in exceeding expectations. Um and less in not meeting expectations, which is always what you want. And then um here, the lowest performing students met their target. Um and students with disabilities improved, um other groups declined. Uh but not necessarily hugely significantly if you look at a negative one point six. Um however, like um like the new literacy curriculum, this is our first official year of implementing a less lack of math. We started quite a few years ago where people piloted it and then we kind of brought on different grade levels. Um so I feel like, you know, bringing in the high quality instructional materials that and having that um shared expectation so teachers can plan together and look at assessment data together. And then with the additional professional development, um it's going to really help to um continue to shift instruction. And uh state, less than exceeding, more in meeting, more or more and partially meeting unfortunately, um but less in not meeting expectations.
So in our science um achievement, interestingly enough, and you saw this uh as we looked at the high school science achievement. Most of where we've been designated path forward has been in science. And so we have had good success with the um mystery science curriculum K to five. And ironically, um or maybe not ironically, um last two years, uh our middle school volunteered um to pilot uh the new innovative science pilot. And we've done um in those results, we've done pretty well in terms of uh student results, when you look at the bar charts that we've been showing versus the state forty six percent meeting versus the state thirty five percent meeting. Um seven percent for our students succeeding, six percent uh exceeding. So we're excited about that and.
They actually took both, the 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 regular and the innovative. This is the 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 regular one, but the innovative one is even more rigorous, so.
Where where the uh accountability system, uh the MCAS exam is actually going in terms of the newest version, if you will. Um so in the more traditional assessments, we're still seeing a a trend where we're at or just a little bit below in terms of meeting expectations. We're a bit above in meeting expectations and partially meeting expectations, below and not meeting expectations in science. Um you've seen the I Ready uh assessments before we reported on them, but basically this gives us.
Have the leadership team been able to present this data to their staff?
Um they're starting to. Generally, they'll do it at uh faculty meetings. And so my guess is if they didn't do it at uh the October, because it's the first week of the month that they have their faculty meeting, it'll be at the November.
And then have family reports gone out for MCAS?
Family reports were going out last week.
They're supposed to be mailed out, yeah.
I received.
And then the I Ready, we sent up the all sites. And for all sites, sent those out last week?
They all received.
Um in the, yeah.
Okay.
The end of last week, we had, I know we had two schools using the mail machine on Friday.
And we shouldn't.
It'd be, yeah, if they didn't get them, they should expect them the next couple of days. Yeah.
And then with the I Ready scores, the we shared the family, I'm sorry, the district code with families.
So everybody at the beginning of the um uh meeting or just before the meeting, we had to change two slides. Okay, everybody got that? Um so we have um I Ready assessments three times a year, as you know, from this year, we're excited that we're able to add um ninth grade, so we'll have a K to nine. Um ninth graders, actually, I believe Sandrine reported this week, right? Yeah, week, they'll be starting it for the first time. And so we'll start to have those results uh K to nine, which uh is exciting.
ELA and math for ninth.
Yeah. And um this gives you an idea of obviously the accountability data that comes from the state gives you an idea of where those students, our students were in those grade levels um in the end of last spring, uh in some cases, the beginning of spring, if they took it in March. And this gives you an idea of where our students currently at these grade levels uh in the month of September. So as you can see, um in terms of just a quick look across all grade levels, you have in the green where they're either um mid or above grade level or early on grade level, about forty two percent. Um with thirty five percent of our students approaching grade level. And then we do have students that um are sitting in the red area where they're A grade level or more than a few grade levels behind. Um and so those are obviously numbers that we want to see as we go through this year. We've forged the green, so basically from right to left. But this gives us a good idea of where our students are right now.
It's very similar to the beginning of last year as well.
Breaks it out um process, um I apologize, this is the reading diagnostic or ELA. And then this just breaks it out by grade level. See where each grade level is at. But it's a, it's a similar pattern where, you know, there's no grade level, unfortunately, where you're not seeing some red. Beginning of the year, you're going to see obviously more yellow, where, you know, you're okay with sort of approaching grade level. And then um it's great if you have some people in green, you're going to be moving them um even further.
Can I just ask, sure, uh when the teachers or the um coaches get the red? Like was there like a plan developed at that point and? Yeah, so um in addition to um I Ready, we also um follow the dyslexia guidelines and have individual screeners. So uh they give the Hegarty phonemic awareness assessment. We have uh the Quick Phonics for K to two. Uh we use the I Ready decoding, uh pseudo word decoding third grade and then fluency uh assessments three to five. So all that data then we put into kind of a crazy spreadsheet. I'm working on a better da- dashboard, but and we sit down um coaching the interventionists and look at students and see um based on all those data points, who need some extra support. And they get into those interventions. And then the overall hope is that with the the foundations really hitting and the and Hegarty phonemic awareness in the in the tier one curriculum, we're going to see less and less kids in the red. Um because we'll be giving more kids what they need and intervening earlier, um especially with these new screeners.
So everyone gets all those screeners or just kids who identify from this or from the beginning?
So for math law, the the new screener, so in it's in order for I Ready to be um, what do they call it? I don't know.
Crystal screener.
An approved.
An approved, thank you, screener. Um there's some additional things that we need to do. And of course, Emmy, think about phonemic awareness, right? You have to really do that one on one. And you can see in I Ready if they can recognize sounds, but you can't hear them produce them, right? So um those are, those are the ones that are required. And then the fluency probe is not required fourth and fifth grade, but um the implementation committee really thought it was important for us to have that measurement. Just since we're giving parents information about their fluency and just the importance of every teacher, kind of every teacher who teaches ELA, listening to their students. Um now with a fluency, if they're uh at or above at the beginning of the, uh above at the beginning of the year, we're not going to make them do that over and over again, but um. Yeah.
Can I ask about the flip side of that? How many of you have kids in the green that are testing out early, you know, in the year or just right at the top of that? What are we, what are we doing?
So um so for the the nice thing about the um Witten Wisdom curriculum is it's really just, it's very rigorous. And what we try to do is provide uh access to all kids, even if, like I said, they're struggling with decoding. So the the kinds of things that kids are doing with Witten Wisdom is challenging, I think, to all kids. The foundations piece, some kids might need, not need the decoding, but it also really stresses encoding, which is something, the spelling that we've seen across the district that was um a gap.
In middle school?
In middle school?
Is it like, I'm just wondering, like, what about the kids who are right on the edge there? Like, I know they do these tests frequently and they're constantly.
Doing the assessments and things. So, yeah, so they do have, um well, obviously within the English classes, they're differentiating. Um and then with uh the way that they do interventions and enrichment, there are students who are getting extra support in reading during intervention time and other kids who are doing enrichment activities. So they're and they're and if they've tested out of I Ready, they're obviously not doing the I Ready personalized pack.
And then just one more, sorry. So you mentioned that this profile was similar to the beginning of the year or last year. And we did see some declines in in MCAS accountability measures. So have schools begun the process of looking at grade level cohorts of students? So for instance, last year's fourth grade, beginning of the year, compared to this year's fifth grade, beginning of the year, to see either.
Did they decline?
Did they decline? Did they maintain um a level of content from the previous year? And if not, if their profile's looking either not so strong as the year before, and we know that we have MCAS data to kind of substantiate that, then if we're, if we're going into those MTSS teams, are we able to pick apart the data in in such a way that interventions that are being put in place this academic year are more robust than the ones from last? And if not, is there a plan for that?
So that's something that they can be doing in those MTSS teams. Um I was starting to break it down here, but definitely. And uh I think another real push is making sure the interventions are robust and working, but also doing that progress monitoring so that if if things aren't working, what do we need to change?
And it's building the skills in the MTSS teams to be looking for that and having those discussions.
And the tools to be able to monitor it.
Correct, yeah, which we think we're getting. We have those tools now in place and they're able to utilize them. So now it's a question of actually utilizing.
Utilizing, yeah, especially within the I Ready platform, because you can look historically at the year before, being able to look at students' performance.
And they actually have all that in panorama, so you can see that.
Yep.
Um so the math diagnostic, similar to the reading diagnostic, uh just quick snapshot of grades one through eight combined. See, um similarly, that uh we have um percentage shows small percentage, obviously, in the dark green. Um the largest percentage sitting in the yellow, approaching grade level. And then you have folks that, you know, already we know.
Another thing I should say is that the I Ready does not measure writing. So in terms of ELA, um you know, they have other assessments that they're doing curricular wise to assess for writing. So, you know, there might be a child who's excels in reading and writing, but a lot of times it's not necessarily the case. So there's always that challenge built in as well, in terms of improving writing. Sorry, I went back to ELA.
Sorry. Up ahead.
Oh, sorry, it's not.
So this gives you the, in terms of math, uh breakdown on the each grade level. Question, can I move us into our objectives and um action steps? And this is where obviously we want to continue. We talked a little bit about curriculum renewal and that cycle and the fact that um over the last two years, we have purchased and moved into high quality instructional materials. Um and we're continuing to provide the professional development. And now it's going to be that balance between not just providing the professional development, but seeing how it's implemented and taking effect in classrooms. And I think that's where, uh as Mr. Trullio, you were pointing out, um you know, through the learning walks, that's what we should be seeing. And and be able to engage and ask um and then follow up, even more importantly, with the teacher. And especially if you're seeing really cool stuff that's happening and um helping impact kids in a positive way.
I just realized it didn't make sense, so I just changed it. It said learning classrooms, it should have said learning walks.
Hopefully all our classrooms are learning classrooms.
Yes. Oh, it said engaging in frequent learning classrooms.
Um so I I'm not going to read unless you would like me to, um each action step. These are probably more, um with the exception of maybe the engaging in the um learning blocks. More what the district is doing, obviously, because these are the district um action steps in terms of supporting classrooms and buildings to try to make sure that they have all that they need to engage.
So then when you're talking to the leadership team, is each school then identifying one to two of these district level action steps? And then articulating how their building is going to be more specific about the attainment of one of those action steps?
Right. So what we're um looking to do, and we've started to build a template for them, so for that presentation, is give them the opportunity to sort of tell their story, if you will. And they're going to take at least one um key action step under each of these. And they'll have objectives that, um so if they're.
Goal, they'll have.
You know, each overarching goal, at least one objective and at least one action step that they're going to highlight. Now, they may pick up all the objectives that we have under a given goal. But what I was trying to do was, let's focus in on where you are as a school community and what's really going to move you forward. Um because similarly to what um DESI has been doing lately, and we're appreciative of it with their um focus indicators, is you can't attack the entire rubric all at once. There's no way anybody can be an expert on that entire rubric. So what is it that's going to make sense for your students and your building this year that you really can move things forward? It doesn't mean let go of some of the other things. We're going to continue as district to su- to supply the professional development and so forth. But what's going to click for each building this year? And that's.
And and how they're planning on doing it.
Yep. So it's going to be a different type of. Presentation.
Well, I think it makes sense in terms of what we're we're seeing in our data. And then how do we be more strategic about aligning each building's student needs to individual objectives and action steps as opposed to a broader approach?
I think it's very empowering to each individual.
Right.
Autonomy in that as well, which is nice.
I think the second description of the the second learn leadership team meeting, they were feeling that more than two meetings ago when. And I don't know if they were seeing it as empowering. Because it was a shift. It was a shift in terms of how they presented, and it's a shift in how we've written goals. And so all that's. But I I agree with you. I that's how I saw it.
It's like that was the intention.
Right, that was that's how I saw it in the summer as we were making these changes. And, okay, how do we really allow you to focus in on what you feel as a school community is going to really move your students this year? And then and then they do get a chance to really tell their story.
I understand the standards based grading. Can you explain the equitable grading practices for secondary that were?
So.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, I was just so. The idea of equitable grading practices, there's actually a group of high school teachers that read equitable grading practices this summer and had a pretty intensive book study. But there's just certain things that we can do that will continue to motivate students to engage. For example, the zero in your grade book just makes it so hard to ever catch up, right? So eliminating zeros, providing opportunities for students to revise and 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 improve those kinds of. Things that we can do as teachers so that we're not just shutting down kids and that they continue to want to learn and engage.
Oh, that's no, you hit it. And I was all I was going to say was, you know, a lot of these ideas have been around for a long time, but they were dismissed probably unless you were teaching the writing process. Where then it was encouraged to continue to draft and revise. But the reality of the world is that you want to continue to improve. So if someone's eager and is going to engage getting better, why would you say, yeah, why would you shut that down?
The point is learning, not the grade.
Correct. And so it's it's and that's not an easy, you're sort of undoing what's been built up over time in education that, you know, we for a long time. We were about, well, it's late and it's going down, you know, 10 points or whatever that was or late, it's a zero, you know, and. That's. Hopefully, it's starting to change.
It's hard for teachers too, because it's like there's a juxtaposition there. It's not necessarily positive, we're saying, okay, well, you provide multiple means for assessment or what have you. And then we have like all the MCAS data and all the I ready data. So it's like this fine line between balancing. So it's critical, not a point, but also the the human side too, so.
And then there's a feeling, I'm sorry.
The the beauty of standards based grading is that you really get an idea of how students are doing for that particular academic standard. And then you separate out things like work habits and things like that. When the way we do grades traditionally in the United States is you throw in some participation and some homework and everything else. And so that grade kind of gets convoluted and you don't really know what the student understands, knows and is able to do. So grading for equity kind of starts to push us. Being more clear about our grading practices and also, like I said, not shutting kids down to learning. Are you saying something else, sorry?
I don't know.
Nice.
All right.
This obviously is more things mostly at the district level. Well, actually, these would be a combination. So you may see schools starting to pick up some of these action steps and then rewriting them to make some more sense for their. Their building and their grade levels. And so basically, it's just making sure that we're thinking about student engagement. That was a big topic for the leadership team last year as we did our walks. Our, you know, our seeing student engagement, student engagement look like. Probably our most telling experience as we went formally through the school was when we had a chance to connect with students. And get them to explain to us what student good and students, good student engagement was. And you see actually some of their thoughts on the cell phone survey. As we get to that.
And a lot of this is really around student centered learning, which means that the students are doing majority of the. And and problem solving and and not the teacher, right? So it's definitely a shift because that's going to really engage kids rather than the sit and get or the sage. Right.
And final objective here again goes back to MTSS. Yeah, objective and then action steps, MTSS teams. And it's really looking and helping out buildings to continue to build their skills. But also Ms. Brown's providing training around some of the new screeners and screening activity that we have to do at specific grade levels. With the change in the regulation.
And this is where we mentioned progress, helping folks use the tools that they have to progress monitor and make sure whatever we're providing for students is actually working.
So this is something that is a combination really of where Desi's taking some their vision, but also where ELPS has been. Since 2018, we've had a diversity and equity steering committee. That committee brought us into just before COVID and the 2019, 2020 school year, an equity audit. We've been working off of those recommendations for the last few years. And. What we're trying to do with this overarching goal is sort of bring some of the. Competence staff into focus as well as what more and how can we start to attack some of the areas that also are recommended in the equity audit? But we haven't been able to go after yet. And so this is just recognizing that. Our school community is a diverse community and that we want to make sure that we're always an inclusive culture and we're welcoming. And that staff, students and all who come into ELPS feel like they're welcome and they belong.
You'll see in a minute, one of the action steps is connected to something that we've been working on. But, you know, the push for having a more diverse staff, because all the research shows positive outcomes for all kids. But especially historically marginalized students. And so there's some things here and I didn't give you the citations, which I can give you. But just how how powerful it is for students to have teachers who look like them or have similar identities, backgrounds. And if you look at our data and we're looking at some of our subgroups, you know, this can have a major impact. But if you look, our student body, and this is here. Is is like Mr. Smith said, continues to diversify in many different ways, including racially and ethnically. We're 73% white, 12.2% Latino and 4.0% 4% African American. And then if you look at the staff. 378.8. Sorry, this, yeah, that's percentage. Our most 378 of our staff are white. And we have very few folks from other racial backgrounds. So it's this is kind of showing you the data to show you why one of our action steps is what it is. And here it is.
And so one of the things that came out of our equity audit a few years ago. Looking at how do we do a better job of recruiting? Hiring and then retaining staff. Highly qualified staff. And one of the things that. I don't think, at least in my tenure as superintendent, we had done a lot of, and we really started to take a look at it was how do we. We've had partnerships with. Teacher prep programs, but we haven't necessarily gone and made presentations. And so now we're starting to. Move on those partnerships to hopefully do that and get an idea of how. Student teaching candidates look at the East Long Island Public Schools. Is it is it a district that they would like to come to? Why or why not? Start to get into job fairs more. But the work that over the last two years we've really done is looking at our hiring processes. How do we standardize that a little bit more? And make sure that we're looking at how we eliminate any kind of implicit bias. And just provide training for folks that on our larger committees, if we have committees and some of you have participated on committees. How we do just do some training before the hiring process begins around that, just so we recognize it and we can discuss it. That has been pretty successful. To tweak that so that we're able to. Now move into the screening process, because we have had staff members who have hired and have left pretty quickly thereafter. And so it's figuring that piece out and doing a better job mentoring and supporting new teachers. Because that's that's unfortunately a problem. It's not only the Commonwealth, but probably across the United States. Lot of challenges.
It's hard to hire in general. I did want to also point out that the. The, what is it? I'm forgetting what it's called.
Equity Steering Committee.
No, the equity accelerated leadership program that our entire leadership. Team is part of with Klee. Is really about improving our mentoring of of leaders, but also improving our overall mentoring. For keeping staff and keeping staff feeling supported and also to lead these improvement cycles that we talked about earlier. So it's really exciting that we have that opportunity, two year opportunity with them to build those capacities.
And then the last objective here is continuing the partnerships that we've started. But one of the partnerships that we have on a variety of levels. But this is the second year of having a diversity and equity inclusion belonging director to ALPVC. That's exciting. We got a chance to work with her last year a little bit at the end of the year. She came to our equity steering committee. And we're starting to work for her more consistently this year. And we hope to. Get insight and help and support from her and the LPVC as we continue to look at objectives under this goal.
She does come to your equity and diversity meetings at the high school quite often, right?
Right, she does.
Questions? No, that was a lot.
From the schools that relates to our meeting that was today tonight. For compiling it, that is. There was more, we fed it back. Already.
Types of data for you.
Okay, good with that. Move on to. Feedback on the new cellphone power.
Okay, so in your packets. Graphs and comments. They're out, the first survey is staff survey, they're around people, virtualing staff and high school staff. And as you go through. All of these surveys, as we discussed, I'm here to see that there's definitely a division in terms of. Staff desire and student desire. Although I I. I want to applaud our students both for being honest, but also, you know, as you pick through some of the many comments, there are some that even when they're telling us that they don't like the policy. They still recognize that, yes, there may be some benefit. And then they bring some other arguments, but that are pretty. Well stated in some cases, so it's interesting to read. But anyway, just to give you some of the highlights and then certainly any questions that you may have. So in terms of the staff feeling that how we approached it and the sort of ease of implementation, you had about 83.7% feeling that it was relatively easy to implement. They they're strongly agreed or agreed. Interestingly enough, 9.8 in neutral on that. I guess they couldn't. As to whether it was easy to implement or not. Then you have. About 61.8%. Feeling that the students were pretty willing to follow the new procedure. More variety, obviously, on that than the implementation question. And this was, I thought, a pretty good one. Even though you have a variety, the majority of staff who responded, you had about 92 staff members who responded. 65.2% really only had to follow up with somewhere between one and five students somewhat consistently in terms of getting them to follow the procedure. And then the next question was, how often or how many students, rather, did they refer or have to refer to administration? And the majority, 80.4%, said zero students. But then obviously, one to five being the big answer. Now, staff perception is that 84% of the 92 responses felt that students are more focused and engaged during class. 17. 4% of staff members responding feeling neutral about that. And then roughly 89.2% of staff responding felt that they would like to see this continue into the next school year. Then there are a lot of comments that staff and students wrote. Some that I thought just were interesting as at least one person and possibly more. But certainly, one of the first few comments talked about how they appreciated the fact that it was a district wide approach. And that it came from. Committee through central office and admin into the classrooms and so forth. So everybody was on board. They also appreciated, a couple of people mentioned that they appreciate the administrators being out and about early on. Enforcing that so that they didn't have to be. The so called in quotations bad guy. And then something interesting is, you know, and obviously, these are anonymous, so challenging to follow up. But some people saw it as. A time drag in that, you know, they would rather that it all be implemented by administration and that it's costing some time on things, so to speak. So there were some comments around that. Questions on the staff survey? And there's a lot of comments. Read them all to highlight them all for you.
Initially, we talked about this, it was to get a sense of if. Putting this next layer of the policy into effect was going to. Place an undue burden onto educators and. Some describe that situation, the majority aren't describing it as such. So I think we had originally put it, put this check in. Yeah, forward was. I don't need anything necessarily in the feedback or in the staff data to. Moving away.
So moving on to student surveys. I would say that the high school is a little bit more strongly against seeing this policy continue. We have in terms of it, you know, their response to it being relatively easy to implement. We have. A much wider variety in terms of the response. Now, interestingly enough, on both student surveys, you're neutral categories. So. So relatively easy to implement, you had roughly twenty six point two percent um feeling that it was relatively um easy. They were neutral on it as whether whether it was easy to implement or not. And thirty three point one percent agreeing that so roughly a third agreeing that it was easy to implement with another five point nine percent feeling that um they strongly agreed that it was easy to implement. But then you had obviously twenty one percent um strongly disagreeing and thirteen point eight percent disagreeing with that statement. And whether they're willing to follow the new procedure that had a variety of percentages all the way around the the um the graph.
The comments are amazing.
The comments are.
Absolutely amazing.
The comments um the way I sort of just captured it was um I I give a ton of credit um going after the idea of building responsibility and that um that's what we should be instilling and that um they also went after the idea of is this the best use of time at the beginning of class? And I I give a ton of credit to the few who said things like, I see that there is a benefit to this. And the high school uh students certainly did showed off their writing skills, which was big to see. And they were um quite diligent in making sure that we have all the different points that they wanted to make right there in the comments. And they, the high school students only had about five percent reporting it continuing into the next school year. Berkeley uh students were a little bit more this with a bit with twenty six point four percent saying that they would agree or strongly agree that it should continue into the next year. But as I said, their neutral responses grew quite a bit with in their comments equally as good. But often were, I have nothing to say about it, or I'm not sure, no feedback. Um or just simply put, it is bad. But then you did have comments such as, I think it is a good idea and it does help people focus a little more than last year. Uh and then another comment, I don't really have any complaint about it. But it was nice to see that no matter whether it was uh grades six through eight or nine through twelve, uh we did have a lot of people writing, which was with me. Maybe we'll get more surveys about probably if they're passionate about. So questions on that?
I think it's interesting, like when you look at the comments written, how it shifts um Berkeley seeing the phone as a connection family. And when you look at the high school, it's more about a connection to their peers. Depends on the purpose and the reason for which students are advocating that they want access to the device. That shift happened.
Our persuasive writers at the high school did certainly get the whole emergency aspect into their comments.
Yes, they did.
Um but that, no, that that's an interesting shift. That and Berkeley students were used to pretty much not having the phones anyway. So um you saw probably in some of the staff, Berkeley staff comments that there wasn't a for, it's not really a problem now. Which is probably why you're seeing more neutral responses by the person too.
I think too, as continues those kids from middle school who are so used to it going into the high school. It's not like we're going to be taking anything away.
It's already what they know.
Expect and it's the culture.
Yes.
So we um can certainly develop something for families. I'm not sure if I can share their feelings with their children or not. Uh so and I can send something out to um families and just see Berkeley and high school families how they're feeling about it in general. At a future meeting. Okay, thank you.
Progress. Okay, up next we have a gift of five hundred dollars to the Mountain View School from Sandy Hook Promise Foundation.
Yep. So in your packet, you'll see that um there's a request from Principal Elaine Santinello for the school to accept five hundred dollars from the Sandy Hook Promise Foundation. It is for their third place win in the Start With Hello contest from last year. And Elaine goes on to say that with your endorsement, Mountain View would be pleased to accept these funds to be able to deposit to the gift account to benefit the um students.
Last year they made a video and entered into the contest.
National contest.
National contest. On third place, which is pretty cool.
Really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, take a motion to accept the five hundred dollars, please.
I move to accept the five hundred dollars from Sandy Hook Promise Foundation.
Or?
Or Mountain View School. I say that.
To their gift account.
It'll go into their gift account.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion made by.
Second.
Second by Kate. Any other discussions? All favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five zero. We have a field trip going to the University of Connecticut for the Model Congress.
Yeah, so this is um this is uh pretty exciting, actually. Um usually our Model Congress goes to and I'm sure that will continue to go to um AIC, I think, is hosting it the last few years. And uh spend a weekend there um over at AIC. This gives them an opportunity this fall in November to go down to um Yukon and participate in workshops and Model Congress uh exercises down there. And Mr. Phelan, um who's our advisor, is interested in in taking this opportunity with the students. And Mr. Page is supporting this. Going to at a state, even though it's relatively close um to all of you as part of the policy.
Questions, concerns, motion to approve?
I move to approve the field trip to University of Connecticut's Model United Nations. November third to twenty twenty four to November fifth, twenty twenty four.
This is next year.
Now this year.
Yeah, they meant to follow my degree. I was like, isn't it twenty twenty?
White years.
Should be.
Ahead of himself.
Want me to do it over?
No.
Yes.
It's fine. You meant twenty three, right? Sammy, you got twenty three? Yeah, you're good. Motion made and that's as presented to. Motion made by Kate.
Second.
Second by Antonio, discussion. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, that carries five zeros.
I will double check that. I thought it was this year, but I do see twenty four.
Twenty four on here.
Email.
Oh, but this is Mr. Phelan's letter.
I'm actually in the Model Congress Club, but hopefully I'll be president. Uh yes, it is this year.
This year.
Few weeks, actually.
Yes, okay.
All right.
So so that's just a um this is actually
Phelan just carried it through.
Not uh not Yukon.
Yeah. Oh, David.
Nice.
Okay, we have a final uh topic of discussion tonight. Definitely something that um a gentleman that I've known a long time had asked me about and I hadn't realized that we had a a relatively decent senior discount. Got the um good chance to discuss uh and possibly get more seniors. And when I say seniors, I mean senior senior citizens um to that school and other sense. So um I don't know if folks wanted to talk about adjusting that number even more so for on twenty five dollars now. I didn't I didn't here, but I would change it to five. I would just encourage as many as many events as possible. And with the discussion around, you know, taxes going up potentially for the new building, I think it might be a nice gesture to offer easier access um to folk come out and support the team and be part of the community and part of the high school. So something I asked that you put on the agenda. So here we are.
This was a good topic, Greg, because a lot of people out there may not even know about it. So, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And when they buy the tickets, they can buy the season passes at the booth?
At the booth, yeah.
Yeah, both inside and outside winter and?
Yep, if they um wait till winter, we reduce the price to twenty dollars for the season pass. If they buy it in the fall, it's twenty five dollars right now. And um for uh adults, it's fifty dollars for the year or thirty if they wait till the winter season. See. Um currently, just so people know, many viewers at home, our ticket prices are five dollars for an adult, three dollars for a senior, three dollars for student. And if uh you're a student athlete and you you um are eligible to pick up the uh free pass. The events that we charge for are football, soccer and basketball. Um the other events are are free of charge. Mr. McGee just put together just some areas, information on area schools. So our ticket prices, as you can see, um are similar or lower than um at least uh Minichog and Long Meadow. Depending on which category you're looking at. And uh their passes, um at least Minichog's passes, look like they're a little bit um they start out about the same and then um are a little bit higher for seniors.
I would completely support the lowering the prices for seniors to attend. Absolutely.
Grandparent?
I was just at a soccer game and I was sitting, a lady and senior citizen was sitting next to me and she's like, I come to all these games. What's going on tonight? Why is it so dead? And I said, oh, it's not. She's like, oh, this is soccer. You're saying the football too. You can tell though, she comes like every night and she was eating dinner.
Oh, wow.
Teachers and I feel like she must have been a regular.
It's great entertainment.
Yeah, that's great.
So.
At least she has a pass.
I know, I know. Well, I would have asked. I didn't know either. That was great. But for basketball and stuff to bring people in and a good night out. Something to do.
So what's the pleasure of the committee then? Currently it's three dollars for the year. You could attempt to drop it or leave it. There.
Why don't we drop it and drop it?
Okay. Who? I'd like to go to five.
If you um are dropping the pass, do you want to drop or what are you going to do with the individual game ticket?
Yeah, leave it the same. Yeah. It's a good incentive. You can buy one ticket or three or get the season of the year for five.
Why wouldn't we just the individual game is free then?
Yeah.
Then they wouldn't have to buy.
Right. So what, I mean, why if we're?
We mean, we could do that too. I mean, I'm not adverse to that either. That was actually the request.
Dollars, kind of, if we're going to five, why not just go to nothing?
I mean, how many are we selling of these?
Safe, so as you're.
How many are we selling of these?
I'm not exactly sure.
Kevin did um Kevin McGee did let me know that um roughly, I want to say somewhere between three thousand and four thousand dollars come in, probably. He's estimating.
Just from seniors?
Yeah.
That's wow.
That's only a hundred and twenty people, though.
Yeah. So that's what he's estimating.
Go to six hundred from three thousand. Four zero. I think if the five dollars is just something you give and you can get the pass back, what we could do open to seniors all the time, I don't.
Does the seniors um annual pass look any different than the students or the adults?
That I don't know. Question. What if you went um if you're going to have them pay for something for a pass, why don't you just make the games a dollar? They're coming to more than one and then you still have the incentive for five dollars to get the pass.
But I think if anybody who comes to a game and you tell them, yes, it's free for this game or you can get all the games the whole year for five.
Oh, yeah, no, I I'm.
Then I think everyone just gets the five and be done with it.
I would I would agree with that.
Versus the one.
Okay.
And you do that right at a game, though?
Yeah.
Okay, you can.
I would argue that that if you make it free, then you might as well just eliminate the pass.
Well, not, yeah. Well, unless we make it free.
What is it three thousand dollars go to?
It helps support the program, which is approximately five hundred thousand, half a million dollars to run the
The budget.
One of the funding sources.
We have a few funding sources. If you remember um when we went through the budget and we broke down grants and revolving funds. So athletics has a revolving fund because probably the operational budget is somewhere above
Yeah, we said fifty thousand.
However, the program costs over five hundred thousand. And so the revolving fund, which is um funded through athletic um fees and
Gate receipts.
Gate receipts uh is that's where the revolving fund gets its.
Anything we do tonight, though, would have to be moving into next year because people have probably already made purchases.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd have to reimburse.
We have a mechanism to offer reimbursement?
I mean, you could table tonight's vote and I could find that out for you.
I don't know that you create a stir. I think if they, somebody was upset, they could call you, let you know.
Well, I'd also like to know if it looks different than other than the other ones.
Yes, I would imagine. I don't know. I wouldn't ask you, though. Pass the pass.
I think a little more.
Mr. McGee, have any feedback about which direction?
He was comfortable with whatever direction the committee.
Yeah, that's fair.
Yeah.
There you go.
Good to know.
He he did want you to know, you know, the amount of money that he thought it brought in. But uh that's, you know, he certainly can work with whatever the committee decided.
A lot of the input we got, specifically the senior center in Gordon, you alluded to it, was that this is getting more expensive.
Right.
Now it's getting more expensive and offer anything in terms of entertainment and um being part of the community, I think it's totally worth it.
It's gesture to a little bit counts.
Yeah. I said we.
Yeah, I'm comfortable as long as we weren't significantly hurting there.
Yeah.
The years we host the Thanksgiving game, we're in a better better shape than the years we don't host Thanksgiving game.
Which is every other year.
Yeah.
Works out.
Yep.
What do you think it's not?
I told you what I think. I would, I'd like to know a little more information about it. I mean.
You're taking out a different colored pass.
Senior citizens' pass looks the same as the student pass and is currently the same text messaging.
Isn't that okay?
Like one of us.
One of us got the answer.
I I could go buy ten passes and I could go give it to other people.
As a senior citizen?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have to have like some distinction.
Yes.
I don't know, but I think, I guess.
If we just.
Or we could take someone's aim and they only get one pass.
Right.
I think they write the names down because I know when I was at the game, um Kayla Choa, who actually, I don't know if I should say the name. But she sells tickets there and they were asking like the name for anyone who was signing up for the annual passes. So I'm not sure if it's the same for senior citizens as it is for students, but they were taking down names and writing them on the passes. So.
Yeah.
So they're checking everyone's name when they walk through that gate?
They check, they have to check IDs.
Cross reference later.
I have lots.
They do check IDs?
They do for a senior citizen discount.
Right. Lots of different colors, though, if they wanted me to use a certain color.
Be going forward. I just think again, like if if there is a revenue stream that's produced, if we open this up, which I do think is in order to like promote sense of community, especially with our senior citizens. I just think that we don't want to cut off that revenue stream any further. If the passes are all the same, then you could be potentially not just those three thousand dollars.
So maybe we should differentiate.
Read it out.
Yeah.
It changes the colors each year, he says.
Okay, and so how much is going to cost the citizens to get such a pass?
I thought you just said you wanted it to go to uh zero. I mean, if.
So they wouldn't, they don't need a pass.
Color of a pass wouldn't matter, then you could just.
Show your ID.
Show your ID.
Show your ID.
If Mr. McGee is saying he can sustain the revenue.
Yeah, but I think giving a pass would still be better because when I walk in, I show my pass and keep walking. So it'd be nice to give them a pass still.
Rather than have to take their ID out every single time.
Yeah, just once. All right, I'm down. Take a motion, please.
I, I'm, oh, I motion, are we going to do this, like they say, or just read this? Or do you say I motion to move?
To, uh, move to eliminate.
Yeah, create a senior citizen's annual sport pass at zero cost.
Can I, oh, you're saying zero cost?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I move to create a senior citizen athletic pass, annual pass for zero cost.
Sure. Again, motion made by Kate. Second by England, especially. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. Very cool. Motion carries five to zero. Okay. Good.
We'll work on that.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, if no one has anything else, I would entertain a motion to as soon as I remind folks, we have a forum this Thursday. It's a high school, six o'clock, the tours are at five thirty. And we have a big vote from number seven, high school, their beast break. We gotta entertain that motion, Peter. Motion made by Sarah. Second Miami discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay. That motion carries five to zero. Thank you, we are.